Good evening. We are now going to call to order the February 10, 2022, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brodsky?
Here.
Commissioner Rothman?
Here.
Commissioner Di Placido?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn? Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Weingrad?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Sapon?
Here.
Commissioner Carswell?
Here.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Here.
Commissioner Bowe?
Here.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Here.
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Veighy?
Here.
Commissioner Hecker?
Here. Thank you.
Now, can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I have one announcement this evening. Earlier this evening, the Board of Commissioners held an executive session to discuss a pending matter of litigation. With that, we will now turn to public comments on agenda items. Are there folks who are attending here in the room that wish to speak to matters on the agenda this evening? Please come forward.
Thanks. Is there one? Hi, folks. Joe Rooney. I live in Ardsley. And a couple of issues right here. The first one is, I just got my tax bill. So I hope the people who are listening or are watching are going to take a look at it because I don't like to say things that aren't correct. And I was telling everybody that you all raised our taxes by 22%, but that's wrong. And I don't like to say things like that.
Freddie, I just want to ask, is this, are your comments related to something specific on the agenda? If not, there will be open public comment later in the evening.
Yeah, the agenda has item. This thing's all printed wrong. Expenditures.
Okay.
So I looked at 2022, 2021, and just went back to pull 2018 up just for giggles. And our millage rate right now is 5.002. And last year, it was 3.931. So that's a 27.24 tax, percent tax increase. So it wasn't 20 or 22%. And I know some commissioners have said, oh, it's closer to 20. It's 27% over tax increase. So I'd love to introduce you, I've said it before, to folks who live in Ardsley on Maple Avenue, who really don't appreciate that. But I would challenge you all to let us know, make the case how we're going to get better services. Make the case how we're better off than we were last year. And just for grins, I looked at 2018. That millage weight was 3.483. And these are the township rates. It doesn't have anything to do with the fire, county, MCCC, sewer, or refuse. So between 2018 and 2021, there's a 12.9% increase in the rates people were paying. And then we went up 27.24% in injustice last year. That's nonsense. And you all should be ashamed of yourself. And I don't mean to say that. But first off, you should represent exactly what you're doing. And the second one is, that's a crazy increase. Just for comparison also, the Consumer Price Index, 2018, 1.9%. 2019, 2.3%. 2020, 1.4%. 2021, we all just found out it's estimated at 7%. And we know what this year is. So for folks who are watching, between our local government here in the Commissioners and the school board, we're paying almost a quarter of a billion dollars now for local governance. When I was a kid growing up, when I was in the Marine Corps, it was a funny statement. It used to say, you're spending like a drunken sailor. We've gone way out of that league right now. Funny thing about drunken sailors is they only spent the money that was theirs and that they had. So a real thing to look at right now is, we're spending like we are local elected officials. So I have a little thing right here. I said that the school board are safe to you all, too. Mr. Weingrad, Spiegelman, and all you guys right here. Dave Ramsey, total money makeover. Abington Township does not have a tax collection problem. You can ask Jay Blumenthal. We collect record taxes every year. We have a spending problem. And you all got to get spending under control.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other residents here in attendance that wish to speak to agenda items this evening? Ashley, do we have residents who are participating by Zoom?
Yes. Experia, at this time, your microphone is unmuted. You'll need to unmute on your device. Experia XZ2, your microphone is unmuted. You'll just need to unmute your microphone on your device.
Aye.
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm a resident of the Hollywood section. I'm going to segue into what the other gentleman said, that I'm very, very sad that we're building apartments any place we can.
Excuse me, before you continue, can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, Karen Milovich. I'm at 529 Berkeley.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that we're over 95% developed. And we are building apartments supposedly in line with transit-oriented districts.
So, ma'am, I'm just going to interrupt for a second. This comment period is about the agenda this evening? There is an open comment period at the end? So I'm just wondering what is...
We're talking about finances. And where are the finances for the building of all these apartments? And how much the residents are going to have to pay for school millage because of the tax deductions given to large developers?
So there is no agenda item this evening about any construction in that regard?
Well, it relates to finances. And it relates to traffic. I know there's several agendas on traffic. How are we going to resolve all of the traffic from the thousands and thousands of people that come, that you're going to build apartments and garages already on already developed land on the Mall? I think you're thinking about it over at the Hollywood Shopping, actually, the Huntington Valley Shopping Center. So it just really makes me sad. It's incurring expense to the citizens. It's changing traffic. And I think it's as drastically going to change their lives. This used to be such a nice community. And I don't understand why the Commissioners want to drastically change it. And every citizen I talk to does not want to change it. So I really just don't know where the impetus is coming from. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your comments.
This is Laura Lehman in Meadowbrook. And I agree completely with what both speakers said, what Joe Rooney said about the finances. It is out of hand. And you had $19 million that you knew you were getting before you rose the taxes. Okay, that was six times what the raise in taxes brought you. And it was manna from heaven. And it is absolutely inexcusable what you even did with it without any real meaningful public input. Instead, you planned it all. And at the last minute, you gave us three minutes to comment on everything in the whole wide world, including that. So, and I have no doubt that you're going to do it again with this next $9 million that's coming in May. And we have so many needs that the residents want. I really, I cannot understand how you can say we're at the top of the chart and that we are the ones that all of this is for, when we can't get a question answered. So again, with the finances, the finance there, I came to the finance meeting. And the minute I said comprehensive plan, when I was going to ask exactly that question, how are the finances going to support this comprehensive plan? And I was cut off, both by Mr. Weingrad and by Commissioner Veighy. Both of them cut me off improperly, as you know, cutting off our right to speak constantly and not allowing us to finish. And that's a violation of sunshine law. And there's a felony misdemeanor when you do something that you know is wrong and you continue to do it and take away resident rights. That's a felony misdemeanor in Code 18. So you need to stop doing it. I also want to say that urban design is now going to be our new consultant for the community development. We have a very highly paid community development person who is also zoning code, electric, plumbing, mechanical permits. I can't even tell you all the things that are on the schedule of this person, who has really didn't even know what the property maintenance code was recently when a resident needed it. And so we have a problem there. She came to a meeting at the vacant property board and introduced herself as the Community Development Director, when all of the work of the vacant property board is about zoning. She didn't say, I'm the zoning and code enforcement and permits. And literally, she was in charge of the problems that are at the vacant property board, but introduced herself as the Community Development Director. That's absolute deceit. It's deceit. How can we be at the top of the chart?
Thank you for your comments. Your time has expired. Ashley, is there any other resident?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We will now move on to the consent agenda. And for that, I will turn this over to Vice President Matt Veighy.
Thank you, President Hecker. And I move to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda has passed. We will now move on to unfinished business. And once again, I turn this over to Vice President Matt Veighy.
First item is BOC 06011322, a motion to advertise, authorize a partial release of escrow for LD17-02, LD20-02, LD21-05, Bridgewater Shrank, owned by Philadelphia Presbyterian Homes, Inc., also known as Human Good Pennsylvania. Escrow release number one, the amount of $3,160,158.74. A nice move.
Second, begin.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions for members here in the room? Any questions from those Commissioners participating via webinar? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now turn to new business. And surprisingly, I will turn to my good friend, Vice President Matt Veighy.
Thank you, President Hecker, again. Next item on the agenda is BOC-02-021022, motion to appoint Professional Health Services, Inc. as the firm to provide physicals, lab testing, and stress testing compliant with the NFPA 1582 guidelines for members of the Abington Township Fire Department for fiscal years 2022, 2023, and 2024 at a total cost of $499.80 per member for a total annual cost of approximately $79,980, based on the average of 160 participating firefighters per fiscal year. A nice move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions for members here in the boardroom? Commissioner Veighy?
Management man Freddie, I looked at the budget. I saw a line item for contracted services for $79,000 under Fire Department. Is that what this, that was earmarked for?
I believe it is. Mr. Mc, Mr. McInerney, do you agree?
No, actually, contracted services are the regular things that we use throughout the year. The physicals are under their own category. I want to say it's health and welfare. We actually budgeted $90,000 last year for this coming year. And we're pleasantly surprised that the, this bid came in significantly lower than what we budgeted.
Thank you.
Mr. Veighy, it was moved because of the new accounting system. So I think you're accurate in your original thought.
Well, I'm just happy that we've budgeted the right amount for this.
Yes, it is.
Other comments or questions from those on the webinar? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And next item on the agenda is BOC-03-021022, a motion to approve the Conway Field License Agreement between the Township of Abington and Ardsley North Hills Athletic Association. Nice move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions from Commissioners here in the boardroom? Hearing none. Commissioners on Zoom? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that completes the business of the Board, Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. We will now move on to the Finance Committee. And for this, I will turn it over to Commissioner Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. First up, we have Treasurer's Report. Is Treasurer Blumenthal on the line?
I am. Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. So I only have one report for this evening. It's the monies received from various departments that was put into Republic Bank. And we brought in $2,156,389 as compared to last year of $1,233,081 with an increase of $923,308. And as I said, there's no report for collection of taxes because we don't collect tax, real estate taxes in the month of January. And as you all know, real estate tax bills were sent out last week, last Friday or Saturday. So that your constituents know, please, that if they did not receive the bill within the next week or two, to contact my office. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. Any questions or comments from board members here? Questions or comments from board members at home? Okay. None? Okay, thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. Have a good, have a good weekend.
You're quite welcome. You also.
Next up, agenda item FC02021022, a motion to approve the December 2021 expenditures in the amount of $5,277,032.49 in salaries and wages in the amount of $3,276,708.94 and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of March 2022.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Brodsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Placido?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn? Commissioner Thompson?
Accused. Does an employee have a company on the payday list?
Commissioner Weingrad?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Sapon?
Yes.
Commissioner Carswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Veighy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hecker?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Okay. And that will, that will conclude the Finance Committee agenda items for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. We will now entertain public comment on the general matters of the township. And Mr. Costello, please come forward. Let Ashley turn the mic on.
Mask on or off?
On, please.
Gerard Costello, people call me Jerry. I'm from Overlook Hills. I know some of you, some of you know me. Most of you probably don't. But I retired from the Abington Police Department almost 29 years in March of 2017. It was a long time. I saw a lot of things. Some of them I wish I could unsee. But one thing that I keep remembering is the site of a burned-out apartment on about the fifth floor of what was then called the Colonnade. It's now 100 Old York Road. Why do I bring that up? Well, it could happen again, very easily. We all know that the developer fought the township tooth and nail to not update the fire protection system in that building. And who, who was the point man for their developer? Well, the man you appointed to the zoning board last month, Mr. Stephen Klein. So what do we know about Mr. Klein? Well, he's cost the township hundreds of thousands of dollars in lawsuits surrounding his activities down at 100 Old York Road. We know that there was a blatant conflict of interest with him being the project manager of 100 Old York Road. You okay, Tom? And he was serving as a commissioner, involving himself in the permitting process. We know there was a grand jury seated to investigate his activities. And that grand jury was magically quashed about two weeks before it was supposed to deliver its findings. Almost like a wizard made it disappear. There was also a campaign of retribution against township employees who had the guts to stand up to them. I know one person retired a year early. I know another person apparently just got her lawsuit settled just recently. Let me guess, undisclosed sum and an NDA, correct? Like, you keep going on. I know, we know Klein's a misogynist. Some of you remember what he did to a Commissioner in this very building. Was that okay because she was on the other party? Is it all of a sudden okay? And you forgot that? He also pushed around female employees in the township. And we know that Mr. Klein applied for the same job two years ago and was rejected. So what happened? What changed? Last month, several people jumped up and voiced opposition. But all I heard from the board was Mr. Spiegelman and Ms. Carswell saying how great the process was with volunteers. I'm sure it was great with most of them, except for one. Commissioner Carswell, you said your first question was, how do you, how do you work with other people in groups? How did he answer that one? I won't bully people. I'll stop my intimidation tactics. Commissioner Schreiber, you said that you were on the panel because you were the squeaky wheel. When he came, his name came forward, did you squeak? Did you ask questions? Did you raise concerns?
All right.
What changed? I know my time's running short. My suspicion is this is a case of party loyalty paramount to the best interest of the citizens of this township.
Mr. Costello, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Other, other residents wish to speak? Please come forward.
Joe Rooney, again, I live on Maple Avenue. First off, that was a great job. Thank you very much. The second one is, I took a look. This was a 20, I think I have it written down here. It's 26 right now. We started about five. It was 21. It was about a 17-minute meeting. So there were three comments in the very first section. The first person, the president interrupted. The second person, the president interrupted. And the third person, they cut off. We're just a community. There's not that many people talking. The meeting's going to be over shortly. Just let folks talk. I mean, that's a neighborly thing to do. It's not that big a deal. This isn't a carved-in-stone operation here. And there are neighbors that want to get up and talk. I want to talk about speaking rights. At the last meeting, at the very end, I got up. There was really an impressive turnout of citizens that complimented Mr. Brodsky. And I know he's not here. I think he's on the phone, I mean, on the TV. I thought it was really impressive. So I walked up afterwards to compliment him because you really don't get that. You don't find people just calling up to say what a great job somebody's doing. So I thought it was noteworthy. What I found out was, he was pretty frustrated because he wanted to address the board at the end of the meeting. The president basically gavelled the meeting closed without asking Commissioners if they had anything to say. So it's actually not even just the citizens whose speaking rights are being curtailed or cut short. It's actually Commissioners that they don't want to hear from also. You all can't, can't put up with that. Mr. Bowman, you got to stand up for Mr. Brodsky when it needs to. Ms. Schreiber, you got to stand up for him and say, hey, we'd like to hear what the Commissioner has to say. If we're cutting our citizens off when they only have three minutes to address the board, if we're writing emails to Commissioners and they're not even responding to them, and then we come to the board, everybody's cut off, and Commissioners are even cut off, we're supposed to have a back and forth with our Commissioners, have some way to actually talk to people. So I understand you're comfortable with this, but it's not right. You have to protect people's right to speak. The ability for us to get up here and talk, even to be wrong, is hugely important in our democratic society. We have to be able to talk with you in the neighborhood, talk officially, when people are on the Zoom or listening, or they're watching the video afterwards. It's an exchange of ideas. You can't just cut folks off. You don't need to. You can run the meeting better than that and let people get out. If they're going to over, go over, say, how much more time do you need? Maybe they need one minute. This man might need 30 seconds more to finish his prepared remarks. We all would have benefited from that. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else here in the room wish to speak? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Griffin, and I live on Valley Tour Road in Huntington Valley. And my, my comments are the amount of development that I've seen over, over the past, I guess, couple of years in, in Abington. Specifically, where I live, it just seems like people that have large properties are being sold and then developed. Where one house was, there's several. Specifically, on Minell Road, there is a property over there that had a horse barn and a house that was sold. And I understand five houses are going up there. Now, I haven't seen anything in the last couple of years, but I don't know what's happening over there. And directly across the street, there's only three homes on the same amount of property. So I just wondered. And that's not the only one. I mean, there's several other ones, too. But I just wondered what's happening with our zoning? And how much property do people really have? Or is something being changed? I know when we moved in, and that's been 40 years ago, we have approximately, I guess, three-quarters of an acre of land, as most people in our neighborhood do. And I just, I don't understand, like, why the properties that are being sold are being carved up. And it's, it just adds to, I don't know, congestion. And it's just not, just doesn't seem to be the same as what we moved into 40 years ago. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other residents in the room? If not, Ashley, I'll ask you to turn to the residents who are on Zoom.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. And I want to thank the gentleman for coming forth to talk about the history of the Colonnade and all that happened there. And that is still happening. And I promise you, the intimidation is happening as we speak with residents and others. And you put in the charge of every zoning issue while you put this person on the zoning board. You put a person who has absolutely no zoning experience on, in that position to be manipulated. And at the same time, you have somebody in refuse who has years and years of zoning and code and certifications and all of that. And she is in refuse. It is absolutely mind-boggling what's going on here, including the fact that we have absolutely no explanation for how these meetings are now to run. Are we ever to have a land use meeting again? We don't understand it. We deserve to have a full explanation of what it's going to look like. Because that meeting proposal and speaking proposal was the most convoluted thing I've ever seen. And so we need to have an explanation. And I hope at the end of this segment that where I'm speaking or somebody else finishes, that you will explain exactly how these meetings are to run. You have, you have changed the new meetings up into working sessions where there's no vote. Well, then, there's no sunshine law that requires you to have a specific educated and informed speaking time before you vote on something. And indeed, what we also have is this comprehensive plan. It's not on the TV. It's not on, the Commissioners newsletters just tell you there's a comprehensive plan meeting, and there's some stuff going on. But they don't say what it is. And so even if you put on the TV, February 15, comprehensive plan meeting, nobody would understand that you are about to take... nobody would understand that you are about to take, I don't know, 9,000, 10,000, 15,000 properties and, and take them out of single-family zoning into multi-family zoning? And you're not telling them? And you're planning to try to pass this? You're trying to solidify it by April. Originally, it was May. And then you missed a meeting in December, I think it was. And so it should have been by June and then stretched out because residents needed more time to be informed. Instead, it's been speeded up. And that is, while you are taking away our speaking rights, you're doing this. So we need to have this township start working for the residents of the township. We need a meeting, not a survey, which you can manipulate. Okay, would you like a walkable community? Oh, check the yes box, please. Did you know that meant we were going to rezone your house so two or three families could walk from your property?
Ms. Lehman, your, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
At this time, phone number ending in 1308.
Hi, this is Gene Geld. I live on Pinewood Drive. I, I agree with the other speakers. We're not being informed. And this is central planning at its worst. We don't know what's happening. The residents don't know what's happening. I contacted my commissioner. I'm still awaiting a written answer. I, I was told that my email went to spam. I said, why don't you write me a response via email? Still waiting. So information's not being imparted. And what is happening in this township with central planning is disgraceful. We want to know what's happening. What are your plans? Not just, we don't want to attend these meetings and being told, this is what's happening. We're voting on this. And you all vote in lockstep. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does not appear that there are other comments, Ashley?
There are no more comments.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are adjourned.